Yeah, we can really avoid construction.
So, or then he just, he just closed out?
Kind of almost like a guy with a shift to try to keep. I took almost all his money out. They called Liz. They told her six forty-five.
The what?
They told Liz to get here six forty-five.
You told Liz?
My wife.
Alright, seems like we need to get this going.
Six forty-five doesn't look like a good time to come in. If you're parking one, you should park in. I took mine parking by after, who's gonna tell you? Big sure.
She's gonna be probably.
Jackie's not gonna be on. I didn't think so.
Well, she's not gonna be here in person, in person.
She's not, she's gonna be here?
She's not gonna be here in person.
In person, so she'll be on, okay, good. Make a little room, you make a little room. I'm very bad.
Hey, hey, Mikey.
I don't think Victor had that many.
Make sure you see Liz. She did, I told her to come here between six thirty and six forty-five.
More or less, right?
Make sure you. I'm gonna tell her that. Person who lets you into that office, into shop at all times.
It should start. We got everybody, don't we?
Okay, there he is. He's there. Yeah, that, that it again.
So, what are we, what are we doing?
For the what? Yeah.
We'll be starting in just a moment.
It's a blur.
Anyone else that we're waiting on? We're ready to start, okay. Call the roll, please. Mayor Mitchell, here. Vice Mayor Santeen?
Here.
Councilman Fahad?
Here.
Councilman Vasquez?
Here.
There is a quorum present. Thank you. Please stand if you are able for the invocation. For the invocation, I have asked Reverend Wornell Vickers from the City Vision Church to, yes, please. Do we have, oh, maybe at the speaker, thank you. And I want to welcome Reverend Wornell Vickers and his beautiful wife, Dr. Robin Vickers, who's also here. Most of you may remember that in past swearing-in ceremonies, I've asked Reverend Vickers to do the invocation. He was my colleague at the county and as the Reverend of a very popular church here in Miami. No one else has a better idea of how much, as a public servant, as a county employee, we depend on the guidance of our Lord. And so Reverend Vickers has a very good understanding of combining the two of how often that is really what guides our decisions. So, thank you, Reverend Vickers.
Thank you. Let us pray. The God of justice and mercy, we thank you for the gift of life, health, and strength. We thank you for those who have completed their term of service to this wonderful city of Miami Springs. We thank you for the work that they have done and all that they have, they have accomplished for this city to make Miami Springs a better place to live. Father God, we pray for those who have been, who have been given the opportunity to serve the people of this beautiful city of Miami Springs. I pray that you would help them to act with character and conviction, to listen with understanding and goodwill, and to speak with charity and restraint. I pray that you would give them a spirit of service. Let them be reminded that they are stewards of your authority. I pray that you would guide them to be the type of leaders the cities, that the citizens of this great city needs. I pray that you would help the leaders of this city see the humanity and dignity of those who disagree with them, and treat every person, no matter how weak or small, with the respect that every person deserves. Finally, let their aims in everything and every meeting be aligned with your direction. Let their plans be orchestrated by you, and let them place their hearts and their minds in your hands so that you may direct them. For this is my prayer. In the mighty name of Jesus, we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Just join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. And I just wanted to mention, I said this at the last meeting, but again, one of the things that I'm gonna miss most about not serving on the council is this moment when we turn and we pledge allegiance and the flag to be right there. For me, has been every single meeting, I can tell you for the past eight years. When we turn and say the Pledge of Allegiance has been such a touching, memorable moment to think that we have the opportunity to serve our great city, and for that, I'm very grateful. So, with that said, this is a very special meeting. It's one that has happened many times in the city's future and one that will continue to happen many times in the, in the city's future as we have elected a new council and the new council steps in. For me, I want to, to thank the residents who gave me the opportunity. Eight years ago, you gave me your trust and a great deal of responsibility, and for that, I will be eternally grateful. I feel very honored and privileged to have been able to serve my hometown of Miami Springs these years. For the city employees, for our city manager, city attorney, our city clerk that, and, and, and the city clerk's office that we work so closely, and every single one of these departments, every single one of our department directors and their staff. Thank you for the opportunity to work with you. Thank you for your service to your city. It's been a real privilege and honor to collectively work together and improve our beloved town. And to my counsel, to our vice mayor, Victor Vasquez, our mayor-elect, our current council member and mayor-elect, Walter Fahad. I know she's, she was planning to attend but was unable to attend, to Councilwoman Bravo, and to council member and council member-elect, which continued, George Santeen. I cannot tell you how much respect I have for each of you, your integrity, your hard work, your dedication, knowing that every decision that we've made while we haven't agreed on them has been made from a place in your heart and in your mind where you really want the best for our city. I, I can't tell you enough how much I have, I have enjoyed, but I have been honored to serve with you. And for those of you, those of us that are leaving and those of us that are remaining, the city is in really good hands with our new council elect, so this is a very exciting moment. I do want to just mention, we have Annabelle Orea Guzman here representing, Annabelle, could you stand up? She's representing Mayor Levine Kava, and she is, for those of you that don't know her, she's our liaison. We talk a lot, you know, and, and she gets messages to the mayor and arranges meetings and does everything, so she'll continue to serve our city from the county's perspective. We also have our school board member, Deanna Spino, here. And we also have our clerk of the courts, Juan Fernandez Bardine, I always say that wrong, thank you for being here. And so many others that are here, thank you for your presence as we turn our city over to new leadership. So, with that.
Mayor, I, I have the absolute pleasure today of presenting the outgoing council members with a little token of appreciation from the city for your years of service. I know I've said this, I said this before, and I'll say it a thousand times. This is, in my twenty-five years, twenty-five-year-plus-year career, the best council I've ever worked with. And what makes you the best is that in working with each of you, day in and day out, you do this job because you love your community, and you do it to make it better, to leave it better than when you first got on. And I can tell you, without a shadow of a doubt, you're leaving the city in better shape than when you first started. That is the goal of being a municipal elective official. Leave it better for the next generation. And you not only did it, but you did it well, with dignity, with, with ethics and, and strong morality. It, it's been an absolute pleasure working with each and every one of you. And selfishly, you guys did hire me, so I appreciate that. But I will miss each and every one of you. Be no stranger, you have my cellphone. You call me anytime. You don't have to come to a council meeting to complain about something. You can just call me. So, with that said, I will start with, well, Jackie's not here, so we'll send this to her, but I will start with the mayor.
So, this says, "In recognition and appreciation of eight years of dedicated service to the city council in the city of Miami Springs." It's a gavel, obviously.
Thank you, J.C. This has really special importance to me because, as some of you know, since my time, in the past five years, since I've been serving the city, we've gone from zero to seven grandchildren. So, it's really exciting for us, yes, between our three daughters, we have three daughters, but when our grandchildren have been visiting, I bring them to city council meetings, and they are really impressed by the hammer. You know, they get the hammer, and why is the hammer so? They will love having this, when I show this. Thank you, J.C.
And then you can all stay up when I, for Victor. And the next one. Next one is for a true gentleman. Counts, oh, Vice Mayor Victor Vasquez. "In recognition of four years of dedicated service as councilman, Group Four, to the city of Miami Springs."
Thank you, thank you. On my way here, I had a lot of mixed feelings, right? This is, and, and, and I brought my cheering section, my, my wife and my son, Victor Angel. It's been one of the true honors of my life to have served the city of Miami Springs for the past four years. Even with those meetings, almost eleven o'clock at night sometimes, but we did the work, and, and I feel proud of what we accomplished, what I helped to accomplish and what we accomplished. I agree with the mayor and, and with J.C. We've got a great team. And I'm just sorry, J., uh, uh, Councilwoman Bravo is not here. She and I started together. But I am delighted and happy that we are leaving the city with a good team. And if they don't, we'll show up to, just messing with you. Congratulations to all of you who ran, and especially those of you who won. It's a great honor to represent our city, and I will continue to serve as a, as a public servant, as always, in the community, so. And I'm happy that my wife, Dr. Mara Hernandez, and my son Victor Angel are here. And my daughter's not here because she's in Cozumel, Mexico. But, um, we didn't have any grandkids during we were here, but our daughter's getting married next year, so maybe. Thank you all. God bless Miami Springs, and God bless you all. Thank you.
I'm going.
I'll just chime in.
Yes, sir.
Just with the outgoing council, when I started in twenty-twenty in August, when Mara stepped down to run for school board, and I ran and won in twenty-twenty, we were in the middle of COVID, we were meeting through Zoom. We had a lot of crime, like Thirty-Sixth Street was like a conflagration, and, and we had a different mayor. And I can tell you, over the last six years, things have really taken a positive turn, and, and I think that we're on a very good trajectory. We have a new city manager, we have a lot of changes that, that have happened, and it's because of the hard work and conviction of this council. I, I truly believe that this council will, will, will be recognized in the future as one that really kind of helped this city get on a, on, on a trajectory for great things. So, thank you. It was an honor serving with you guys.
Thank you, councilman and mayor-elect. In a moment, we'll be calling you mayor.
The chair?
Yes, sir.
Also wanted to rally with our councilman Fahad, that said, I am honored to have had the opportunity for the last couple of years to be with you guys, and I've learned a lot. I hope to govern a lot better because of it. So, thank you. Appreciate it. Hopefully, you guys are not too far away when I still need some friendly advice. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir. Okay, so, we'll open it. If there's any other public comment, welcome to come up. If not, we'll move to the important part of. Okay, we have the administration of oath of office. Oh, I'm sorry, we have to have a resolution. I'm sorry. The resolution, excuse me. I need to put on my glasses. Not, I'm guessing, not, I'm guessing at what I'm looking at. Okay, Agenda Item Five, Resolution. A resolution of the city council of the city of Miami Springs certifying and declaring the official results of the general election of the city held on April first, twenty-twenty-five, and providing for an effective date.
Do the chair motion to approve five.
Is there a second?
Second, the motion.
Is there any discussion? Last time that I'll say this, call the vote, please. Vice Mayor Santeen?
Yes.
Councilman Fahad?
Yes.
Councilman Vasquez?
Yes.
Mayor Mitchell?
Yes.
The motion carries. Thank you. And now, we have the administration of oath of office to a city officials, and Erica and J.C., I'll let you take it over from here as to, we start with the mayor-elect?
Yes. Yes, if Mayor-elect Walter Fahad may step down, I believe that over at the arch is here to administer the oath.
All right. I, Walter Fahad, do hereby swear.
I, Walter Fahad, do hereby swear.
That I will support the Constitution. Will obey the laws of the United States.
Will obey the laws of the United States.
And the state of Florida.
State of Florida.
And I will.
And I will.
In all respects.
In all respects.
Deserve the provisions of the charter.
Deserve the provisions of the charter.
And ordinances of city of Miami Springs.
And ordinances of city of Miami Springs.
And will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of mayor.
Faithfully discharge the duties of the office of the mayor.
I just. Thank you. So, Captain of Carriage was a leader in the Boy Scout troop. When I was in Boy Scouts, you and Carl Odin and Buddy DuHurst were the older kids that I looked up to, mentor then, mentor to this day, so that's why I had you do the honor. So, thank you, buddy.
Congratulations, Mayor Fahad. Next is Group One, Councilman Jorge Santeen will be sworn in by Elizabeth Santeen.
Hi, Jorge Santeen.
Do hereby swear.
Do hereby swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Obey all the laws of the United States.
I will obey all the laws of the United States.
And of the state of Florida.
And the state of Florida. I will.
Respect.
In all respect.
Deserve the provisions of the charter and ordinance of the city of Miami Springs.
Deserve the provisions, charter, of the duties of the office of council member.
And will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of council members.
Faithfully will.
Faithfully.
I will faithfully.
Discharge.
Discharge.
The duties of office.
The duties of office.
Of council member.
Of council member.
Congratulations, Councilman Santeen. Next is Group Two, Councilman Joseph Dion will be sworn in by the Honorable Clerk of the Court, Juan Fernandez Berkin.
First, I just want to take this opportunity to inform everybody and remind them that my office does not issue traffic or parking tickets. Okay, we simply collect the money, all right?
Okay, all right.
I.
I.
Joseph Dion.
Joseph Dion.
Do hereby swear.
Do hereby swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
And will obey.
And will obey.
The laws of the United States.
The laws of the United States.
And of the state of Florida.
And of the state of Florida.
And that I will.
And that I will.
In all respects.
In all respects.
Observe the provisions.
Observe the provisions.
Of the charter.
Of the charters.
And ordinances.
And ordinances.
Of the city of Miami Springs.
Of the city of Miami Springs.
And will faithfully discharge.
And will faithfully discharge.
The duties.
The duties.
Of the office, of the office of council member.
Of council member.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, Councilman Dion.
Juan, I want to say thank you for coming out here. It's a real honor to work with your team. You guys do a great job, and you can count on me anytime you need. Thank you, Juan.
Next group is Group Three. Councilman Orlando Lamas to be sworn in by Master Chief Moises Dominguez.
Hey, bro, let's do this. Okay, ready? I state your full name.
I, Orlando Lamas.
Do hereby swear.
Do hereby swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
And will obey the laws of the United States.
Will obey the laws of the United States.
And the state of Florida.
And the state of Florida.
And I will, in all respects.
And I will, in all respects.
Observe the provisions.
Observe the provisions.
Of the Charter and ordinances.
The Charter and ordinances.
Of the City of Miami Springs.
City of Miami Springs.
And will faithfully discharge.
And will faithfully discharge.
The duties of the office.
The duties of the office.
Of council member.
Council member.
Congratulations, Councilman.
Well, thank you. Step up here and take a look.
Congratulations, Councilman.
Next group is Group Four. Councilman Fabian Perez Crespo to be sworn in by Mr. Ken Wild.
Fabian Perez Crespo.
I, Fabian Perez Crespo.
Do hereby swear.
Do hereby swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
And will obey the laws of the United States.
And will obey the laws of the United States.
And of the state of Florida.
And of the state of Florida.
And I will.
And I will.
In all respects.
In all respects.
Observe the provisions of the Charter.
Observe the provisions of the Charter.
And the ordinances of the City of Miami Springs.
And the ordinances of the City of Miami Springs.
And will faithfully discharge.
And will faithfully discharge.
The duties of the office of council member.
And will, the duties of the office of council member.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
I wanted to read a quick quote. This is from Manolo Reyes, Commissioner Manolo Reyes, who passed away on Friday. He was a friend of my family. My father and my mother knew him very well. Quote, "If you get into government, you get power to serve." And many people forget about this. You don't obtain power to serve yourself. The people give you power to serve them. Thank you. Gracias. Excelsior.
Moving family.
Congratulations, Councilman Perez Crespo. Ladies and gentlemen, as I call our new council members, if you would come up for a photo, and then I wanted to ask before, after we adjourn, if all, we have a lot of elected officials, and I see our supervisor of elections here, Alina Garcia Arso. So, afterwards, if all the elected officials and other dignitaries and representatives of elected officials that are here are joining us, celebrating tonight, if you would come up so we could all take a group photo. But now, I'd like to present your new council, City Council, and new mayor, Mayor Walter Fahet. And George Santeen. Councilman Joseph Dion. Councilman Orlando Lamas. Councilman Perez Crespo. This meeting is adjourned. Please stay in your seats because now we start the official City Council meeting with the new council.
Yeah, I seen you.
I'll take care of it, okay? Take it.
Back there was here. We probably had more space at the.
At the theater. Rebecca Sosa.
When there's a new mayor, right? Absolutely.
Got to interrupt some more empty six CMA stuff, man.
I'll be there. I'll be there. I'll be there.
I know. I know. You know what it is. I, uh... I went to one in my feet and nobody went.
Yeah. Uh, you got to host one here. I went to one here, but I probably haven't mentioned that yet. No, I haven't. From the Cristo del Ludo. That works out. It's great.
What are you doing there? Yeah, yeah, yeah. I was working with the manager. I love it. You know Ralph, right? Ralph, obviously, is running for Miami.
Yeah, yeah. I'm Tom today.
Yeah. Yeah, I was there. And so, he's good, man. It's looking really good. That's Frank Dune, Ross. That guy is... Oh, man. Thank you. Yeah, they're gonna have to meet and organize, and then...
Me, too. I'm J.C.
Sweetwater Commission.
Oh, Sweetwater?
Yes.
Pleasure to meet you.
I'm also a friend, right?
Oh, you are? Okay.
I work with this guy, Robert O'Wanau. So, Robert O'Wanau, he's up the scenes, and we work for two different cities.
Okay.
So, we're not the only people that...
I don't have, no, I don't think. I can't get inside office right now. But I'm going to. Why?
If I had a lovely man, I would. What's your name, man?
J.C.
Up in this town, love Randy. Someone matters, and a guy before you, his wife is a little perking too.
If he's still down, she's still there.
I'm not sure. Never go into a financial conference. Thank you for liking.
Congratulations.
I have to be... Section.
My soccer's great.
My, I don't know. Happy birthday. Only building in...
Ready to take your seat? Thanks.
It's got some things hanging on. Will you have the space? My son's not yet. He's nine to twelve. That's right, nine to twelve.
Erica. I'm gonna, I'm gonna make an announcement. You can't stay here. How are you? Yeah, yeah, I know. Yesterday. And I gotta get the other meeting started.
Yeah, but that's not, is there even an agenda?
There's an agenda, it's.
Yeah, basically benign, right?
Very benign.
I gotta say hi to you earlier, brother.
I know, man, it got crazy. Mayor Fahad. Oh, he's on the phone.
Proclamation, Public Works. For Arbor Day. That's it. That's it.
Yes.
We kept it like.
I'm still here for the first one. Hey, then we're gonna hit him on the next one.
Good, good. Great, great, can't complain. Going really good, can't complain. That's great.
All the tennis stuff. After the chairs, you got one.
The next morning. When I got there something. I don't have no idea. I went, I went at seven thirty in the morning.
There, I was there. And there was nothing, there was nothing next, next time. I got there at seven thirty. Right? And.
I was there, right? That's crazy as hell. There's another meeting.
Yes. Does, right?
Where is that, brother? Like, where's the call? He ain't gonna pick me up. I was there, I've done that, I did that, maybe like six months ago.
Got one item on the meeting.
Presentation or.
Hey, baby, baby.
I know, it's fine, I want them to pass something. They're like, it seems pretty cold, once, like, oh, we got Arbor Day. Wait, where's?
Maggie has my agenda. I have that agenda?
You know my wife Natalie?
How are you? Nice to see you.
West Miami doesn't have any openings coming soon, right? No, 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 no.
All right. Hey. Smile quick.
Hey, George.
Heidi, 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 I have a Heidi. Yeah, it's gonna be a quick meeting, not a very long one. Okay.
Actually, actually. Feels good, it's been like.
They're not, okay. And Liz, we'll take that. Okay. All right, cool, thank you. Are we ready? All right, call this meeting order at seven twenty-eight.
Mayor Fahad?
Here.
Vice Mayor Santin?
Here.
Councilman Dion?
Here.
Councilman Lamas? Councilman Perez Crespo?
Here.
There is a quorum present.
All right, let's, uh, we're gonna start, so we actually have Vice Mayor. We, we just went from Vice Mayor Victor Vazquez fifteen minutes ago, you are a new Vice Mayor, so congratulations to. Okay, so let's please stand for the invocation by Vice Mayor Santin.
Lord, thank you for the many and abundant blessings. Thank you for the ability to be involved in useful work and to the honor bearing appropriate responsibilities. Today I pray for our new appointed mayor and all the new city council. In particular, uh, this city council. I am asking you to graciously grant us the wisdom to govern, uh, amid conflicting interests and issues of our time. I ask all this in your name, Lord Jesus Christ.
So please, uh, remain standing and join us for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated. All right. We will go through this agenda, we have awards and presentations, so we do not have the families here, but as you guys know. Uh, we have a yard of the month every month and we are very happy that we have. One eight eight Whitethorne Drive, Adrian and Demi Almaguer have earned yard of the month for April twenty twenty-five. Uh, please drive by, I'm sure they would love to see people enjoying, uh, the fruits of their labor, I know it's a lot of work. Uh, to, uh, earn yard of the month, so congratulations to them. Next up, we have a proclamation that we're going to be presenting to Public Works and I believe we have Liz, I know, we have. Our Public Works Director Juan Pena. Come on up. I think we should probably not as well. So we have a proclamation by the mayor of the city of Miami Springs, come on up, Landy. Whereas in eighteen seventy-two, the Nebraska Board of Agriculture established a special day to be set aside for the planting of trees. And whereas this holiday called Arbor Day was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska. And whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world. And whereas trees can be a solution to combating climate change by reducing the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water. Cutting heating and cooling costs, moderating the temperature, cleaning the air, producing life-giving oxygen and providing habitat for wildlife. And whereas trees are a renewable resource, giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires and countless other wood products. And whereas trees in our city increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas and beautify our community. And whereas the city council of the city of Miami Springs wishes to promote awareness of the importance of trees. And now therefore I, Walter Fahad, Mayor of the City of Miami Springs, Florida, do hereby proclaim Friday, April twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-five. To be Arbor Day in Miami Springs and I urge all citizens to support efforts to care for our trees and woodlands. To support our city's community forestry program and to plant trees to promote the well-being of present and future generations. And whereof I hereunto set my hand and cause the seal of the city of Miami Springs, Florida, to be affixed this fourteenth day of April twenty twenty-five. So presented to Public Works. Thank you, sir. Okay, so we are moving on to open forum. First I have, I believe, Connie Rodriguez from six forty-nine eastward.
So congratulations to the new councilman and also to our new mayor, welcome. Um, so my name is Connie Rodriguez, I am a Girl Scout leader here in the community and, uh, we are planning our end of the year trip for my ninth graders. And so I'm here to ask if the city would be able to sponsor two of my girls, um, asking for two hundred dollars for my Girl Scout troop.
Okay, thank you, we can't respond during open forum, but we'll discuss it before the end of the meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you. And next up, James Fulton.
Good evening, everybody. New faces, old faces. Welcome. Congratulations, everybody. We're gonna rock this city for the next couple of years, yeah. All right, anyway, uh, business at hand, so Boy Scouts are gonna go to Puerto Rico for summer camp. Uh, we have a, about a ten-day trip planned. Um, we're gonna be doing some activities, going to the rainforest, a little bit of snorkeling and scuba diving before we get to camp, then go to camp and on the way back. Do some zip lining and some caving. So, uh, I would like to ask for some funds to help us along the way. Um, we have done fundraising, we're selling camp cards ourselves, um, and we're taking money from the tree lot sales that we did, uh, in December as well to help, uh, fund the trip. Um, so if possible, um, we would like to ask for a thousand dollars, it's a little bit more than we normally ask for. Uh, but this trip is a little bit more expensive than our normal summer camp trips, so that's my ask.
All right, thank you, James.
Thank you.
Thanks for all you do for the community, bud.
And congratulations again to everybody.
Okay, so that concludes open forum, we have no council minutes to approve, no reports. Oh.
Breaking protocol here.
No, no worries. Uh, Vice Mayor of the City of West Miami, Natalie Millian Orbis.
Yes, thank you. Um, good evening, our new mayor and our council and re-elected and newly-elected Natalie Millian Orbis, Vice Mayor of the City of West Miami. Just came here to congratulate you all, greetings from West Miami and, uh, looking forward to working with you all, congratulations.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, so, uh, no reports from boards, public hearings, consent agenda, old business. We will move on to reports and recommendations, we will hear from our esteemed city attorney.
No report this evening, you'll get plenty of reports from me over the course of the next, uh, couple of weeks, you've got some really heavy agendas. Um, so I'll leave tonight for just welcome and congratulations to those of you who are new to council and congrats once again to those returning and to our new mayor.
Thank you, Heidi.
Thank you.
Okay, city manager. Uh, J C, is there, can we address, I know that we, we had budgeted a certain amount of money to give away to.
Charity.
You know, charity civic organizations, I know we're getting towards the end of.
Yeah, I'm gonna have to look to see how much, so I can't say yay or nay, I'll see where we stand. Um, but, um, I'll, I'll do what I can, of course.
Connie and James can reach out to you.
Absolutely.
Yep.
Um, and if there's funds in there, I, I'll take care of it.
Thank you.
Um, okay, update. Um, at the recent county commission meeting, as you've all heard and probably read through social media. Um, the county is conveying over one of their county airport lands, they passed a resolution to convey. One of the airport properties, um, in our city over to a developer. In the resolution, and we've had to research it, you know, in the, the deed restrictions that will be, you know, attached to this deed. It's gonna be townhouses, it's not, they're gonna be for sale, it won't be live local. Um, and it has to comply with our zoning. That's what's, was approved, that's what was passed. Um, you know, it will, in the future, I don't know if the county will change their mind, if something happens, I don't know, that's where we stand right now. Um, so I did wanted to clarify that, it's not, um, affordable housing or section eight housing, whatever, the worst nightmare is it's. Townhouses that are gonna be sold, you know, and the reason why they gave the land away is so that the developer sells it. You know, at a re, uh, under market value, so that somebody can have homeownership. Um, have I seen, I haven't seen any drawings, renderings of what it's gonna look like, I, I don't have any of that. But that's the information I do have, and then as far as the land swap that they did with the, um, over there right by the clay pit. Where it's county water and sewer department land. They gave that over to the airport as an exchange to, since it was at no cost, I believe FAA requires that they be compensated, so that is the compensation. Um, for that exchange. Um, to my understanding, based on the research I've done and my communication with, with Jose Fuentes and, and Miami Dade County. That land cannot be used or developed, be developed. It has wells underneath that, that are, had, carry a lot of our water for the entire county and also the power lines above. So, um, I, the, the motion was amended at, at the county, county to look for another piece of land for the swap.
Precisely for that reason.
Precisely for that reason.
Because you can't develop on there.
I believe it was Commissioner Regalado was like, that you can't do anything with that, that property, let's find another piece of property, so. They have thirty days to find another piece of property and they directed the mayor to do that. Um, so that is, I'll be monitoring it and keeping an eye on it and report back anything as it unfolds.
Okay, thank you, I think, I think that that bears, uh, repeating because, uh, sometimes, you know, your reports at the end of the council meeting don't get as, as much distribution as some media outlets. Because there was an article that went out that said that, uh, the county was going to develop public housing on, in those lands between Dove and Quail, just west of, of the clay pits, but that. That land has, uh, a well field, that's why nothing has been developed there, uh, there's a well field, there's all kinds of EPA and federal regulations of things you can't do, easements that you have to provide, uh, because of the wells that are there. Uh, about the only thing you could do there is, uh, plant some trees, and that, that's about, uh, and that's. So, but it's not even certain if that, uh, to, to your point, the amendment, the amendment when it was made was that they should look for another property, because I think. In, in the commission meeting, they basically said, well, we can't really do anything with this property. Um, so they said that they might look for some other options outside the city.
Outside of the city, outside of the city.
But if not, if it's part of that swap, that, that land. But, if not, if it's part of that swap, that, that land cannot be developed, and again, the city will be receiving taxes, and...
It is, it would be taxable, put into the tax roll, just as any other private property owner would.
Okay, alright, so as, as we, you know, as we get more clarity, and, and obviously the job starts now, because we've gotta be involved every step of the way, so that we, we know what's coming, but, my opinion of the, so the aviation department has four properties there, one of them is the Airbus Training Center that we don't get taxes for, and, and the other three, we knew that the county was looking to kinda give one of those, some of those properties up to help...
At first, it was all three, and then it...
To address, you know, housing, and, and as far as all the different ways that that could have gone down, they could have put a big, you know, they could have put a, something huge that, that, you know, didn't fit in that area. We feel that twenty to thirty townhomes, those, those homes are meant for first-time, they're, they're meant for first-time home buyers, they're prioritizing Miami International Airport employees, and also water and sewer employees. Shouldn't last, but they should be first-year homeowners, and they have to remain, they can't just buy it and flip it, those houses have to remain homes for first-time buyers that, that are a little bit cost-controlled, for at least twenty years.
Yes, it's, it's, it's a lot of restrictions in, in this agreement that they have.
Right.
So...
So we will continue to monitor it, but for right now, it seems like it, it fits within our zoning, and it seems like a project that...
It hasn't gone to zoning, we haven't seen the project, we don't know.
But, it appears.
Yes.
Appears from, from what was passed, so we will monitor that, for sure.
We'll keep monitoring that. Um, and then one last update, the golf course recently, we, actually today, it was completed, the, the turf on the driving range, the grass was taking a beating, so we took one strip and we turned it into turf, came out really nice. We opened it up today, so now we're, we're operating at night, we have the lights on, so we're back to full operation on the driving range, so when you get a chance, go check it out, because Kevin did a great job.
Yeah, that's awesome, yeah, and I, I remember people telling us, like, you guys are crazy, that you don't have a strip of turf, and you just beat up the grass all the time, so...
So a number of occasions, we had to shut it down, so to let the, the grass yield, but we won't have to do that anymore.
Okay.
That's my report, sir.
Alright, thank you, okay, reports from city clerk?
Thank you, no report tonight, just wanted to congratulate everyone, and actually wanted to tell you that we had twenty-four percent of the voters turn out to vote this election, which is high in the past two elections, which ranged around eighteen to twenty percent, so twenty-four percent is definitely a good, a good, a good thing. So, looking forward to working with all of you, so thank you.
Okay, city council, let, we will do it in order of seniority, I guess, right? So, Vice Mayor Santin.
Thank you, once again, look forward to this opportunity to, to work with the new council. Familiar faces in a lot of cases, and, and I'm gonna work diligently to make sure that the city's just gonna keep moving forward in a positive way, so, thank you.
Alright, awesome.
So it's, it's a huge honor to be up here with you guys, I look forward to working with all of you, the city manager, city clerk, city attorney, we have an amazing team, so I look forward for all the work that we have ahead of us and working with you guys. I wanna thank our tax collector for coming in, Dario Fernandez, thank you. Overall, my family, thank you for, for being here, and most importantly, our chief of police, thank you. Thank you. Thank you for keeping us safe, you know, I believe it's the backbone of prosperous communities, to have a safe community, and you being at the helm definitely gives me a lot of hope for the future, and I look forward to, to see what we, we're gonna do together.
Thank you, councilman, alright, Councilman Lamas, take it away.
It's a great honor to be here, sitting with you guys and working with this great group, in just a short time, I've seen the great synergy amongst everyone, so I look forward to working with everyone. It's been a privilege to live in Miami Springs for almost twenty-five years, raise my kids here, and my goal is to protect that way of life, so that other future families can come and keep raising their families, thank you.
Mayor, can I read something that I have prepared?
Of course.
So I am so grateful to have been elected as your councilman. I want to express my heartfelt appreciation to my supporters, family, and friends for their unwavering belief in me. We live in a truly unique and beautiful city, and I believe we can make it even better. Let's start by being better neighbors, get to know those around you. If you're a renter here, let's be respectful and considerate of each other, and if you own a house or apartment and have a renter, I kindly ask you to ensure they behave appropriately. Got a lot of complaints about that while it's campaigning. Next, let's stay informed, visit the city website and social media accounts to stay updated on all the exciting developments in our city. Lastly, let's get engaged, volunteer your time at any of our civic groups. We have a wonderful city to contribute to, and every little bit counts. And of course, let's not forget to vote, we have nearly fourteen thousand residents with nine thousand ninety-one registered voters. To Erica's point, although the turnout this election was twenty-four percent, which is pretty good, we can do better. We need to show the county and the state that we have a voice and make our voices heard. Every vote counts, so let's exercise our right to vote, thank you all.
Okay, alright, and so I will just close by saying that it, it's an honor to be up here, this is my last term. I have a sense of urgency because of it, because I know that in two years I will be done. So, I know normally when you start on a council, there's a, there's some growing pains, you guys are gonna deal with the growing pains as we go, because we're gonna hit the ground running. So I'm really looking forward to everything that, that, that staff is gonna put before us. You know, I believe strongly you don't have to be sick to get better, we are great, this is a phenomenal community, it's wonderful, but we can always be better, and we have to be better by trying to find the wins, things that we can fix. I think I've, I've said kind of publicly, they, they complain about government that sometimes you can't fix anything, because you can't fix everything. I want us to focus on finding things that we can fix, so that we can, you know, keep this trajectory we have going and try to be better, and I, I feel confident, I have every confidence that this council that we have up here is gonna, is going to be committed to that, so, thank you to everyone, and we adjourn this meeting at seven forty-eight.